I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for attending today. If you would please mute or turn off any electronic devices, we'd appreciate that. Prior to our meeting here, we had an executive session to talk about personnel match. It's time we move over to roll call.
Mr. Conkey, Mrs. Hecker, Miss Han, Mrs. Moretti, Mrs. Paulovich, Mr. Pollock, Mrs. Rinaldi, Miss Sarno, Mr. Foligno. Six present.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to any public comments on agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move into our presentations with our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Foligno. I have a few items. Before we get started, I want to make sure the board is aware that we've given you all a cup as a token of our appreciation for all the work that you do with empowering every student to a bright future on those cups for you for your enjoyment. So we appreciate your service to the Allegheny Valley School District, little token of our appreciation and a way to reinforce our portrait of a dynamo. So enjoy a cold drink on us of water. Next, we have Mrs. Sue Mellon here. Academic Games is on the agenda. There are at times questions. So I know Ms. Mellon is here to answer any questions that the board might have. Ms. Mellon, do you mind sharing a few items that you have about Academic Games or any information you can share?
Yes, there's probably just two tournaments and five students who are qualified for Nationals. Now, since they partially pay, they make that decision closer to the time when all the finances are more firm. We generally share bus with Montour School District, and that's the plan today again for this year. It's in North Carolina, from Charlotte, North Carolina this year. And we have our next tournament this month on the 20th of November, a precedence, and the kids are working hard, so we'll see how that goes.
The kids have really done well with Academic Games. That's nice.
Yeah, it's very rigorous. In our league, we have Seneca Valley, which is just a powerhouse. They have a schedule set up that they have activity period every day, practice every day. So it's really exciting when our kids prevail in those conditions. Mount Lovinens is there, Moon, Montour, all large history groups. So it's always very exciting to see our kids prevail.
They do exceptionally well, and we certainly appreciate your guidance and mentorship for our students. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Mellon? It's item 8.4 on the agenda. I figure instead of having her wait until then, we would just have her go right off the bat.
How many kids do you predict? How many kids would you predict, students would you predict?
Last year, I think we had 16 that qualified and 12 ended up deciding to attend. So hopefully, we'll have something similar.
Good. Thank you.
We've had one young man, he's qualified twice now.
Oh, wow.
He's a guy that got two trophies last year at Nationals.
Nice.
It's nice to see.
Oh, it is. It is very nice. And especially with something that is rigorous.
Yeah, I always tell the kids, we're studying precedents, and that's not the most maybe exciting topic. I said, "Well, you'll never waste this knowledge. You gotta take U.S. History in high school. You gotta jumpstart."
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Just thank you so much for your time and dedication.
You can take off if you'd like, Ms. Mellon. We appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Get some sleep.
Next, we have Mr. Doug Zenger from the Foreman Group to talk about the junior/senior high school lobby renovation project and the masonry work.
Good evening. And this time, we have some good news.
All right, bring it on.
So I'm going to go through the routine I have here. Just for the payments, there'll be five contractor pay applications for next week. We're at $314,226 for the lobby project for this month. That's 66% complete. And the masonry is $34,389, complete. So going on the substantial completion, we had the column repairs. That problem has been resolved, finished, completed. The storefront is in, the doors are in, the temporary wall is down. There's a little trim work, metal work that has to be done for the storefront, and that's completed. So that's done as expected. The RTU, rooftop equipment unit, HVAC piece of equipment that was supposed to come in in December is now sitting on its foundation out there. So we have scheduled a gas pipe tie-in because there's a down at the far end of A Wing on the roof. We're intercepting the gas pipe that's there and taking gas to that unit. We're going to make that tie-in on December 1st, Monday, when you're off. There's a planned shutdown, shut all the equipment down so we can turn off the gas, make the connection. And then later that week, we should have the startup team on site to start up the RTU. And then you'll have an operational piece of heating equipment and the air conditioning when it's needed. So that is the good news. Instead of seeing this project go into February to be done, waiting for that, we're going to be done as planned. Some work that's gone on this month, drywall has been hung, taped, and finished, still being finished. The storefront is done, except for the trim. Wood slat, I don't know if anybody's been in there. But on the walls, we have wood, that's not paneling, it's called slats, but it's wood finish. And about three-quarters of it is done. Unfortunately, product when it was delivered to the contractor, half of it was damaged. So all that's available to install has been installed. And it's coming from China, and we have not got a ship date yet. So that part of the project is probably going to be not finished until December, hopefully. It'll be shipped in time, get here, probably within a week it'll be done. But it's getting the material.
Will it match?
Yeah, the staining and the way they do that, it's consistent. It's not like something like brick or some things that don't match.
Okay, thank you.
So that should be not a problem. Terrazzo, ceiling grid's done. Terrazzo, they've got the terrazzo poured in the bathrooms, and then the rough grind. So it's generally smooth now, not finished, but it's smooth. And the next step is then put the ceramic tile on the walls, and then after that, come back and do the finish grinding and polishing. So that'll be work that'll go into December. RTU lighting, the lighting is installed. Not all of it completely, but most of it is installed and to the point they can, where the ceiling tile goes in, and then they finish that up. delays, like I said, delays that we've had on the project are resolved. Slat wall is more of a finish that hopefully we'll have done before the end of the year. Going on to the masonry, what they've done so far is the multipurpose building, the addition. There are, as you look at it from outside, the four corners, the two corners, excuse me, the demolition of the old cast stone is done, and then on each side of the entrance, that demolition is done. They're prepping it for the weather resistant barrier that's going to go on. Get that all prepped, and then that coating go on, and then the brick is at Lampis down the hill from the site. So soon as the weather is a little warmer again, we get later in the week and next week, we'll have some warmer weather, we'll get that work done, get the brick laid up, and we'll see how things go from there. Whether they proceed to the kitchen cafeteria area and do the same work they just did, or if they pause for the winter. Kind of weather dependent.
That's all temperature dependent, correct?
Yes.
What is the cutoff typically?
Well, it's 40, but you can work around that. But it costs money, costs them money, not you. What typically you do is if you are determined to work through the winter and doing extra masonry, is the scaffolding they have set up will cover it with plastic so that you create an enclosure. And then you take propane heaters and blow heat in there. And it has to run continually. You can't turn it off. So that's an expense that I don't think they need to spend, but that's up to them. So without, are there any questions?
I have a question about the ceiling. They're triangles, they're not squares?
Yes, this is a patterned ceiling, not like this where you come in, you just lay it in bulk, and then cut a few pieces to fit. This is a custom-made ceiling. There's quadrants, rectangles, I believe, and the triangles, three different colors. We've got a gray, a white, some gray, and then your dynamo orange. So that's going to be something to give it a little more excitement, if you will, rather than just this kind of monolith.
I just have a question. I don't know if it's for you or admin, but the board had no input on that ceiling at all? Because I know I, for one, questioned the triangles, how are we going to replace them if they need replaced? And now to hear that there's colors and everything, and it sounds like a very expensive ceiling, but...
We have to go back and look at the specs.
I think it was in the drawings that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it was in it, but we had always been told, well, this isn't set in stone yet. Like, we can still change this, we can still change this. And now all of a sudden, the grid is up there. So I'm disappointed that the board had no say whatsoever in the ceiling. But that's my opinion.
I know that that's the case, though. I mean, I recall these two public work sessions up at the school where, at least one where I was the only board member, maybe another one, and I feel like maybe we talked about the ceiling at that point. I don't know. But the ceiling isn't news to me. It was reflected that way in drawings. And I remember talking about how we weren't touching the floor and keeping keeping that with the aim. But I think there was discussion of that, but we had to.
Mr. Muddy, are you saying you never had any input on the ceiling and you were unaware of?
Like, I had seen the pictures that we were given, and I then questioned, you know, that there's gonna be triangles and are gonna be hard to replace, and was told that we can change that, you know, we can revisit that, well, if the project hadn't started yet, so we can change it. And the only thing that I saw as presented to the entire board was the colors for the paint on the, around the wall, with white or white. So I just, I mean, it's gonna look beautiful, but I, I think it sounds expensive and maybe something that we could've.
Was that a chain order of some type, Doug?
No, no, there's nothing. That was the way it was bid. The material.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the challenge there is when we talk about having future input, if it's something that you don't want, we need to bring that up, because, I mean, in some of the other projects, the same type of thing happened where these were presented in the, in the drawings, but if nobody questions it or asks to take it out or change it. If you recall, when we did the gym, they were gonna have four by, two by four lights pulling up food, and it's like, oh, wait, you know? And that's our opportunity to, yeah, they're presenting a design, and you know, like, the design, I know we questioned it, but we need to take, we need to take that action.
Right, I did question it.
Yeah, I mean, but that, then that should, we should've taken that to the next step.
Right, I mean, we could've seen samples of what the ceiling would be like, we could've seen colors of what it would be.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I'll admit, I didn't realize it was different colors or color pattern in there, but I remember that we, it was a different style of thing.
Yeah, I do.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm saying it's a, something we have to put back on ourselves a little bit there, too. You know, when we think, see something we don't like or question, we need to.
Yeah, and then like, it's like, when do we question that? Because I didn't know, like, the timeline when these decisions are made, and if it was in the specs, you know, I mean, I think, you know, like, that's different, but I know I specifically questioned, and, you know, now I wonder, like, what is it gonna cost to replace one of those triangles?
I could give you a dollar figure for that, but we're gonna have some, what they call attic stocks, some spare pieces of each of this, probably a few of those. And the grid is generally like this grid, so it's not physically difficult. Three types of tile, and each one fits.
Again, I think, just for members, especially as we go with other projects, when, when the architects are laying out their vision, that's the time we start questioning things, because then they, they're already doing the specs, and once the specs are written, if you start questioning it then, you know, it's, it's more complicated. So, I mean, we, we noticed that originally, I mean, I think that's when we questioned, when we questioned the wood slats in the discussion on that before that actually was implemented into the specs. So just keep that in mind, and I'm not saying we were right on the wrong on this, but a lot of that comes back on us because we, it's that design process when they're given those images that we need to question those type of things.
Yeah, I think moving forward as we do projects, things like that need to be brought to the board, like, you know, bring us a sample, you know, and show me this is what we're gonna put in, like, like with the, that wood, the wood slat things, you know, and the, the tile, or, yeah, the tile and the paint on the walls, we did see those features. And that was after the contract, so.
And a lot of it, like, again, bring the brick in, I mean, again, especially if it's an area where you, you have specific concerns, just don't, don't feel apprehensive about saying, hey, I'd like to see that, that, I mean, just ask for it, because, again, I mean, if you put yourself in their shoes, they're, they're, you know, they have a conceptual design, and then they're trying to take that down to specs, which, you know, again, you can get so far into the, where they're close to the bids and something like that is big, you know, a bit, big change.
I guess I have to read specs.
Well, that's, we should've done that before, once they get to that spec, we should be clear.
Do we get copies of the specs?
What's that?
Do we get copies of the actual specs that would be that detailed?
I would expect you to have gotten, since Terry would've brought those in for you to review, fine with the drawings.
Certainly, I will. We just need to be a little more aggressive in those early.
Oh, I love it.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, if you feel strong about something, again, it's, it's, you know, don't feel butt pushing, that's the time to do it, like, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Plainer, thank you very much, Doug.
So I'm gonna assume that the orange that's in there is not overdone, it's just pieces here and there to bring in the color of the school.
Yeah, it's a field of white.
Very tastefully.
With select pieces of the gray and the orange, so that it's not monolithic like this, but it's not like strong.
Yeah, and I do remember talking about that, too, you know, the idea is to modernize the space and kinda, kinda pull it all together, and, you know, I think that you're gonna do a great job with it. I'm assuming that that was all looked at and, you know, figured out, so I can't wait to see it. It's gonna look great. But my question was before, so they're still using the side door, right? We're still not using that front area?
Correct, we're still working in that, that's still as a construction area.
Just double-checking.
And it will not be available for the fall play, we have to re-try.
Okay, yep, just checking on that. Thanks for following us.
Do they work every day up there?
Yes, Monday through Friday. I don't think anybody's working on the weekends, well, amazing.
Well, I didn't think weekends, but I never see too many cars up there, they don't have that many people working.
Right now, there's not a lot of activity, it's a few things going on, so it's the beginning of the job, and then plumber is waiting for some things to get done. When the tarazo is done, the walls are done.
I was just curious, you know, because it looks kinda dead up there when I'm up there. I think they're hiding.
We're at a point where it's not a wall, but it's, where a lot of the busy work got done, a few things that have to get done.
That's all right.
Just taking trouble guys, and then it gets busy.
You're gonna go check the men's and the ladies' room, see if they're sleeping there.
Anything else? Thank you, Doug, we appreciate you being here, thank you. All right, let's move on. This evening, we have a resolution on the agenda, and I do wanna talk about this briefly. It's from PSBA, and this is specific to the budget impasse in the, in the Commonwealth. Rumor is that there is progress taking place behind closed doors, that's rumor, so we're hopeful that this budget impasse in the Commonwealth will soon end. I'm going to read the resolution to you, it'll come later as a motion, I want to make you aware of what we will be sending forth. Hopefully, it'll be a moot point by the time our voting meeting comes along and the budget impasse, or the budget will have passed, although I would not hold my breath. So whereas, Pennsylvania General Assembly has not yet enacted a state budget for 2025, 2026 fiscal year, resulting in a budget impasse that has persisted for over one hundred days. Whereas this impasse has withheld over three billion dollars in education funding statewide, forcing school districts to borrow funds, deplete reserves, delay essential services, and consider program cuts that directly impact students, educators, and families. Whereas the Commonwealth has ruled Pennsylvania's school funding system unconstitutional, and the state has a responsibility to continue addressing the inequities raised by the court. Whereas, school districts are legally required to adopt annual budgets by June thirtieth and operate with fiscal responsibility and transparency while the state legislature has failed to meet its own budgetary obligations. By June thirty, we are expected to have a finalized budget. The state is one hundred days past the day we were able to do the same thing. Big difference when you sit together and work through and fight and argue and work to find a solution than digging your heels in and saying, it's my way or the highway. The ongoing impasse threatens the stability of public education, undermines the ability of districts to plan for the future, puts current and future educational initiatives and capital improvements at risk. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Giny Valley School District Board of Directors, as a member of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, calls upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor to immediately pass a complete and responsible state budget that, there are six items. Fully funds public education, including basic, special, and career and technical education. Releases all appropriated federal funds owed to school districts without further delay. Honors the Commonwealth's court's mandate to address funding adequacy and equity. Establishes a process by which any interest and fees accrued due to borrowing throughout the impasse is repaid to districts. Includes meaningful cyber charter funding reform by establishing a uniform statewide tuition rate for students attending a cyber charter school. And last but not least, demonstrates bipartisan cooperation and leadership in the interest of the Pennsylvania students and communities. That is on one of our items this evening, and we ask you to kindly vote in favor of that at our voting meeting. Again, our budgets are due at the end of June, and the state has failed to meet their own, own standards that they have imposed upon school districts, which is becoming more and more common, where we see funded and unfunded mandates, and school districts are left holding the bag and trying to figure things out as we go. Definitely some inequities in the system, and especially impacting school district, public school districts negatively. Moving along, I have one other item here, and these are my goals, and I do appreciate everyone who has given me feedback, who's offered suggestions, I will put these under public content for the voting meeting, this is not something that's voted on, however, I do believe that it's important for the public to see these goals. I will read just the goal statement themselves, I've read through the goals specifically before. There are three goals in total. Goal one, formalize a three-year plan to improve student achievement, student attendance, we are in year two of that plan. Goal two, form an improvement model for student progress with English language arts and mathematics skills at the junior, senior high school to initiate MTSS. And number three, achieve ninety-five percent of planned capital project completion for the 2025, 2026 school year. Moving along with our agenda, item number five, we have bills and payments, that is a placeholder for our voting meeting. And then we have consent agenda, operations, finance items, and I will turn things over to our Director of Finance and Business Operations, Dr. Raj.
Thank you, Dr. Gray-Sig. So consent agenda, six point two and six point three, that's the minutes for October's meeting. If you've got any changes, please reach out to Ms. Stoneyad to make that for the voting meeting. Next is operations and finance. The first item, we will need a temporary chairperson or president for the reorganization meeting next month, and so we'll just need a name at the, before, at or before the voting meeting. Seven point three, this is, it's hard to believe, but it's twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. This is the Act One Resolution, not to raise taxes above the index, and the index for twenty-six, twenty-seven is three point five percent. If you can recall, for this year, it was four percent. So based on these inflationary measures, inflation's on its way down. I hope that's true. So seven point four, that's the budget resolution, as rumor has it, as Dr. Gray-Sig said, hopefully they pass the state budget before the voting meeting, now that the budget at the federal level could be passed tomorrow. But as Adele put it, very succinctly, rumor has it that we don't love you anymore or something to that effect. But, yeah, so this could come off the voting meeting agenda if the state budget passes in the next week. Next is seven point five and seven point six, that's the pay applications for work with the front lobby and the masonry project. Any questions, please reach out, I do have details relating to each item, and Mr. Doug Zenger already presented this evening. Next is based on direction from the board, we would like to approve the services of Canzian Johnston as related to improvements, as related to the athletic field at the high school. And so that's what this item relates to. The board did give administration the okay to proceed with this item, but this just formalizes it. Next is related to that is seven point eight, and that's a site survey of the athletic fields, and this is with Mr. Hoffman, and so it's pending review. As soon as it's okay to proceed, it'll be on the agenda. Any questions so far? I know I'm just zipping through. No? Okay. Next is an approval for MARCOM to conduct a communication audit, and Dr. Gray-Sig, do you want to talk about this?
If there's any questions, I will entertain them, it's pretty much what we had, I had shared with the board previously.
Okay, thank you. Next is overnight conference, this is related to technology. I know it came up earlier, but any questions, please reach out to Mr. Main. Next is Crown Castle, this was also presented earlier, and this is just a renewal and approval for extending the existing agreement with Crown Castle. Next is seven point one two, so the AIU has an agreement with TransPerfect Remote Interpreting, and it's to provide translation services for families, and since we are a part of that, this is just a memorandum approving that service that we could avail of, and the fee is five hundred dollars for the year. Next is AVASP, this is an agreement to continue benefits, single benefits for a paraprofessional who could serve as a teacher, a long-term or extended day-to-day substitute teacher, and this will ensure the, she's able to retain benefits while that teacher is out on leave. Any questions? No? Okay. Next is, this relates to special education, it's basically an approval for ensuring data between systems, the integrity is preserved, and so that's what this item refers to. The annual fee is four hundred and fifty dollars. And last but not least, it's for bleacher repairs and replacement. Actually, this came. Actually, this came up during bleacher inspections, so to pass it, we've got to make these repairs and replace worn-out bleachers in the Maggie Fieldhouse. So this is what this item relates to. Any questions? No? Okay. That's the report, Dr. Grisik. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number eight, education. Lekker, do you have anything to share, Mrs. Beckel?
Sure. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to bring some attention to. The Springdale High School newspaper staff brought, sorry, my voice is a little funny. The newspaper staff brought back the monthly edition of The Current. The revised edition includes crossword puzzles, sports information, and a section titled This Day in History. Way to go, Dinamo's, for bringing back a wonderful Springdale High School tradition. Congratulations to Talon Mater, Emma Mason, Tony Peter Griggle, and Tyler Harpine for earning national qualification at the propaganda tournament at Seneca Valley. And in October, 24 students traveled to Montour High School to play Equations with students from Seneca Valley, Moon, Montour, Lincoln Park, Riverview, Mac, and Weirton. Jonathan Youngworth and Tony Peter Griggle earned perfect scores, which is a national level qualification. Congratulations to Jonathan and Tony. Congratulations to our National Honor Society inductees. There were 12 members that were inducted into the chapter on Wednesday, the October 15th. Congratulations to Delaina Arnone, Alina Barto, Talia Brunk, Trevor Clark, Jocelyn Dexter, Reese Fardabar, Ashton Cowell, Cara Leehey, Lily Pazul, Andrew Redman, Robert Simon, and Kristin Tresky. Special thanks to alumna and alumni Hall of Fame member Melinda Kirchreiter Suzensky, who was the keynote speaker for the event. So that was, now on that one, and then, do you want to do your stuff, or can I just get a thing that through? Okay. 8.2, recommend the board approve a student trip to the Holocaust Memorial Museum in Washington DC on Friday, December 5, 2025, for interested students in grades 10, 11, and 12. The only cost to the district is for substitute coverage for a maximum of four teachers. And 8.3, recommend the board ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit to support Allegheny Valley School District in best practices for transition to kindergarten effective January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026. And 8.4, recommend the board approve Ms. Sue Mellon, Ms. Nancy Kelly, and a male chaperone if needed and qualified students to participate in the Academic Games National Competition in Charlotte, North Carolina from April 24 through the 28, 2025. The district will pay all sponsor costs associated with the trip, the cost of student transportation, the cost of substitute teachers, and the cost of meals for students and staff. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Siker.
You're welcome.
I have two items I wanted to share with you today. First, if you remember, we're about a little bit more than a month out from our restructuring for fourth grade, and everything is going pretty well. We did have some glitches in our gradebook, and when we were transferring students to different classes, that has been fixed. Also, CSO, our messaging, parent messaging service, also had glitches, but we fixed that. The students, the parents, very cooperative, they understand there were going to be some wrinkles when we had those meetings, but right now, the teachers and the students, everything I've seen when I go in their curriculum and instruction is not, has not changed other than it's self-contained classroom, and I think everyone's doing a great job. So I will come back to you next month or in January, give you another update where we are at. I think we're going to do a Google forum for the parents as well as the students to see how they like the change and how they think they're doing, so we'll go from there. And then this morning, we had our annual Veterans Day program, and we had it at the fieldhouse at the high school, and it was well-attended. We had grades four, five, and six from the elementary, and from there, we had about 20, 22 veterans that did attend. We had a nice breakfast. Mr. Donnelly made a great breakfast for us, and we moved to the fieldhouse to have a, about a 45-minute assembly. And as always, I think we did have a link for parents to go on to watch it if they would like. I know some of our elementary teachers did do that with their students, so thank you.
I also would like to add that our keynote speaker was Mr. Hevner's son, a veteran, and we're very proud of Mr. Hevner's son, Matthew, for his service to his country and also to the Allegheny Valley School Districts. So congratulations to you, Mr. Hevner, and your son.
Okay, so there's two things I, well, the first is what we've been doing with some instructional strategies with teachers, and one of the main things we're focusing on is questioning techniques and how we can use better questioning to encourage critical thinking and dialogue among students. And then with the math department, we're getting a little bit more specific. I've worked with them during the first two professional development days that we had in September and October, because think back to your math classes, a traditional math class, the sum of exam, the chapter test, there's no multiple choice in math class, but yet all of the diagnostic bench and state testing is all multiple choice. So to kind of help the students balance out showing their work along with being able to do that during a multiple choice question, I've been having the teachers bring their tests that they either just used in a previous chapter or the ones that are upcoming, and we've been using the SAS website, which has a massive bank of previously used state questions that they release. So they've been including at least three of those on every single one of their exams, and then also using them during classroom practice as well. So it's a mixture of showing your work and getting them used to a little bit more multiple choice questions. And then Dynamo Day updates for you. So that was the schedule change that was presented at the end of last year, where on Wednesdays, there would be a half an hour block in the morning, afternoon, right before lunches, where it would be used a variety of different ways. So the first Wednesdays of every month is a building-wide Rachel's Challenge activity. The first two that we've done this year were goal setting, and this last week was choosing positive influences. So I kind of have a little intro on my reminders, one of the pillars of Rachel's Challenge, they watch a short video, and then send out a Google forum to ask them a few questions. So like on the last one was, who is a positive influence in your life? And then what are some things you can do to be a positive influence for someone else? So that's an example of how we would do that, and we'll continue doing a different one every month. The other three Wednesdays are for academic and career-related, so we've had students going to other classrooms to make up tests, to go get extra help from teachers. We've had some speakers in. Band and chorus, I've been using that time to get a little bit more practice for the concert. I don't want to miss any good ones here. So we had BNY Mellon, they presented their program they have with CCAC. It's like a college, college and high school kind of program, so we had ninth through 12 actually down there to listen to that. Next, next Wednesday that's coming up, we have, her name's Lindsay Bach, she's the Director of Marketing at Tribe Total Media. So she's going to be the speaker that will be there next Wednesday for juniors and seniors and any interested freshmen and sophomores. And then, there's one other thing they do, oh, college visits, like we have, we had Penn State, Pitt, Slippery Rock, they all come and we have it set up, oh, as well as the military, the Navy was here already, that they'll come during that Dynamo time, so students aren't missing class time, and it's a very good use of that time that students seem to be taking advantage of. And we're going to sit down with some of them, get some more feedback from them, see what they would like to see from us to help them out some more, and also what kind of career speakers they'd like to hear from. So it's going well so far.
Very nice balance of a lot of different things. Thank you, Ms. Kip. Ms. Given had mentioned Mellon Bank and also CCAC. So when we had previously been talking about expanding programs, this is an opportunity for students to work with Mellon and get some finance experience, banking experience, and also we're on the cusp of finalizing some of the work with CCAC to get more people into the health field. So more to come with that, and those are examples of how we're looking to expand some of our programs that we have to junior, senior high schools. Thanks, Ms. Given.
Ms. Given, you had mentioned that SAS website, and that well, PSBA, they have the countdown, you know, for information, and they reference a material, some materials on there that are available for students who are returning from like a long-term illness, if there was disciplinary and now they're coming back to the school, how to bring them back, because it's more than just show back up at school. You know, you're rejoining a community, and they give guidelines, you know, on that. So I forwarded that information to Dr. Raj Kapal, so thank you.
Dr. Holland.
First, and I think right now for me, most importantly, is our girls are in second overtime right now with the soccer game, so been keeping tabs on that, yes.
Second overtime, one one. Like Saturday.
Just really quickly for me, I submitted October 31st our PDE state audit information, so waiting for feedback, and then received an email that we have a homeless and foster audit coming up next. So we'll transition over to that soon. As soon as I get feedback, I will let you guys know how we did.
Thanks, Tom.
That's in for education.
Great, thanks, Ms. Beckel. Let's move on to technology. Ms. Palovich, do you have anything?
Nothing major this evening. The new phone system is tentatively planned for installation during the Christmas and New Year's break. In near future, SHS will begin playing music in the hallways during period changes. Mr. Main is optimistic, everything will be ready by next week for that. And just in case it isn't mentioned, just a reminder that our fall play, The Witcher's Princess, will be next Friday and Saturday. Tickets are available online and at the door, and you can get more information on our district's website.
Thank you, Ms. Palovich.
Thank you.
Mr. Main, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Let's move on to personnel then, Ms. Haas.
Thank you. The administration is requesting that the Board of Directors approve additional independent volunteers. The spring musical staff and FBLA sponsor are being recommended this evening. These actions ensure our staffing and volunteer needs are meant for the school activities.
Okay, if I could go through the items? Thank you. Item 10.2, we have two leaves of absence for employee 573 and employee 126. Item 10.3, the employment of athletic event worker, there's one event worker there, Mr. Clark keeps the book at our basketball games. Item 10.4, employment of supplemental staff, there is the list of musical positions and also the FBLA position, that is by recommending Mr. Hevner, Matthew Hevner, and then for each of those positions, we have Anthony Martello, Shannon Schreckenglass, Chrissy Scoties, Elizabeth Bicking, Beth Minda, Anthony Martello, Mr. Main, Colleen Tabachek, and Sarah Patrick. Item 10.5, approval of independent volunteers, there are four names listed there for the board to consider. Other names could be added for the voting meeting if there are others that get their paperwork in prior to that meeting. Those names are Lisa Gardone, Judith Marquin, Andrew Parker, and Erin Payne. Item 10.6, employment of extended day-to-day substitute. This is the person who we previously are considering the MOU for. Ms. Lori Hoo-Ha, $175 per day, not to exceed 60 days of work, which takes us to number 11, emergency management, and I will turn that over to Ms. Sarno.
Thank you, Dr. Grisik. The emergency management committee did meet this afternoon. We have some information about speed signage. A new sign was installed on Colfax Street by the high school. I recommend that everybody drives the speed limit now, if you weren't before. You will want to. So yeah, it's really nice, it's pretty hard to miss, so hopefully everybody adheres to that. As a reminder, the speed is 15 miles per hour, and yes, that feels incredibly slow going uphill, so if you feel like you're crawling, you're going the correct speed. We are still waiting on some clearance and paperwork for the acne signage, so we will hopefully get some news on that soon. The doors that the board approved purchased, I believe are in and will be getting installed soon, probably over Christmas break. It sounds like our crew's going to be pretty busy over Christmas break between the phones and the doors. We had, we recapped just our recent emergency drills, noted some different things that just needed to be noted for whatever reason, and those have been going really well, as has our implementation with Synthetix, and I actually forgot to bring it up today, but there was a headline this week that New York City Public Schools will be adopting Synthetix. They are now going to be one of the largest school districts in the country to be using. I don't believe, I think they're piling in at like 51 of their schools. So it was kind of neat that we were like a little ahead of the national curve on that one. So, you know, there's a lot of school districts using that, and it's been really going very, very well here at AVSD. Our November fire drills were all held as scheduled. We're hoping we'll have just as nice weather in December as we did in November, I don't know, based on today. And then we just did want to note, this doesn't really create any changes for AVSD, but some folks may have seen that a couple of laws were signed by President, or not by President, by the Governor Josh Shapiro here in Pennsylvania. One did impact schools, so the Senate Bill 246 requires school districts to inform parents or guardians about incidents in which a weapon is brought to school grounds or school-related activities. Previously, districts were only required to report to the State Department of Education incidents, and in quotes, relating to expulsions for possession of a weapon on school grounds, school-sponsored activities, or public conveyances providing transportation to a school or school-sponsored activity, end quote. We already have it in our procedures to notify the district if such a thing were to happen, so unless pending any kind of thing that might come through policy or anything like that, again, AVSD is just ahead of the curve on that one. So that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Sarno. Mr. Hevner, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Let's move on then to athletics and student activities. Ms. Palovich, do you mind taking that item there? Ms. Noel is under the weather tonight, and Mr. Loviski went to the soccer game on her behalf, and Ms. Rinaldi is not here.
Yeah, if there was a report forwarded to the chair, I apologize, it was not shared with me. Of course, we're all super excited for our soccer team in Johnstown right now, waiting on edge to hear about that. Winter sports are starting. That's about all I have for 12.1. 12.2, spring musical, recommend that the board approve the Addams Family as the spring musical. The performance dates are to be determined.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's also a link there if anyone would like to review the script or if you have any questions, please let us know. Moving along to policy legislative affairs, Mrs. Moretti.
Thank you, Dr. Grisik. You'll see on your agenda for the, I think it's under executive content, there's a plethora of policies to be approved. Now, between the first reading, we chose tonight, or the voting meeting in November, because we won't meet again until January that we can vote on these things. There will be changes, because they were all forwarded to our solicitor's office, and they have been going through them and making some notes, you know, so I will work along with. So I will work along with Dr. Raj Kapal and Mrs. Doniak. And the committee, you know, will all kind of try to brainstorm together and get these together for you. So the second reading, you will notice some changes. Dr. Raj Kapal did include my report to the policy committee that I go into great detail, you know, explaining the rationale for each change there. So in your spare time, you can go ahead and look at those. You know, I know Mr. Quanty was really big on reading up on those. 13.2, these are the mandated changes that are to be put in. PSBA sends them to us after hearing from them due to legislation, changes in code, things like that. So there isn't much that we can do. There's very small, there's checkboxes as to who gets notified and everything. And those are policies 102, 103, 104, 209.2, 247, and 249. Okay. And then, under the recommended ones, these go back, we heard from PSBA's policy, it's PNN. They let us know the policies that are recommended for legal liability changes. I see we did get some information from Mr. Hoffman's office. But those are policy 105, 122, 122.1, 123, 234, 317, 317.1. I feel like an auctioneer. 336, 339, 320, 718, 807, 824, and 918. So those are all going to be opened. And our policy book is going to grow by leaps and bounds. And, you know, our communities will be right on target for situations that may come up in the school. And that concludes the policy report. Thank you, Dr. Graysek.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Under discussion items, I had one requested item. And this was therapy dogs. It was something that was talked about, I believe, at a policy meeting. Discussion on therapy dogs, questions from the board.
I was under the impression that originally, the discussion was about, and maybe I'm wrong, but occasionally having, like there are companies and like nonprofits that have therapy dogs. They will bring them in occasionally for programming. That's the goals of that, what the original proposed idea was. I feel like it was just like on, you had it listed, and then we just never talked about it. I was at a conference recently. And it was for like social workers and teachers who work with like homeless kids and foster kids. So very, very heavy topics. And so there was a nonprofit that brought in, you know, these dogs. And this is where I'll probably lose my next election. I'm not a big animal person. And like, just not, I don't know. It's just, it's fine that other people love them. I just, you know, I don't always love them that much. I can't tell you how much comfort the friends of these dogs at this conference went to me. And it was just, they were basically just there. Like every now and then, somebody in, you know, one of the conference rooms had them. And then they were all out in the hallway too, like during the vent, like where the vendors were. And it was just so neat. And I've seen them go into schools and do programming. You know, obviously, at times where it's appropriate, we're clearly not bringing them in. Although honestly, considering what they do, it probably would be great to bring them in during PSSAs. But we probably wouldn't bring them in on a PSSA day, days where everything has to be very sterile. But it's just, it's neat programming. It's wonderful for the dog, wonderful. So I just didn't know, you had brought up, I didn't know if like, we had been given information about any of these nonprofits or an approach that I just, I can't, I just remember it being somewhere listed. And then like, we never talked about it.
Right. I had emailed Dr. Graysek in the policy committee. And not that we were going like behind any doors or anything like that. A proposal came through from a staff member who wants to have a therapy dog. It goes through an agency. You buy the dog. The school district would be responsible for the purchase of the dog, the upkeep of the dog until it passes away, all its food, all its veterinary bills and everything like that. And this dog would be taken, you know, maybe into a classroom or just available during the day. And we had asked for a lot more information on that, because, you know, we want to come to the board and present researched information. And at that time, we didn't. So that's why the policy committee didn't bring that up, because we weren't educated enough. And we didn't receive the research as of yet. So I don't know where that stands. We haven't heard anything since the original proposal. But, you know, maybe this will spark, so, you know.
Yeah. I was just wondering, it just felt like, it was mentioned that we never followed up.
Right. But that's what it is.
Oh, okay. That's different than what I was imagining. Yeah. Thank you.
Why would, on the updates on Friday, we read it, they would, they could pet the dog, they could hug it. We have these rooms now that are, that kids can go to for their comfort, their problems. And we need a dog? I'm sorry. The person who wants the dog, and she's going to take it home every night. We're going to be responsible for who knows what. I just think that's really.
I don't, yeah. I don't know that you need to take on the responsibility. The issue is whether or not.
They run $10,000. I looked it up.
That doesn't mean that we need to do it. There's people that do have suffer dogs or somebody that may be willing to do something. The question was more around, you know, is that something that we think would be beneficial? Not necessarily that we want to take that on. Not necessarily that we want to take on the liability. That would be on the organization or group or person that wishes to do something like that. So the question is whether there's, you know, any interest, if there's any benefit to even exploring that and whether there's a willingness on the board.
And those are some questions that as a committee, we had asked. You know, and I just think, you know, with everything like the year just starting and everything, our administrators are super busy and that. So, you know, as soon as we get information, again, that is researched and informative, we will share.
What about the dogs, the kids that are allergic to animals? I mean, there's a lot of little things you have to look into.
I think there's pros and cons in everything. But this would be a very big undertaking.
Yeah. And like, schools have policies for that, whether it's.
Yeah, that would be.
Well, you're describing different from what I described. There would have to be policies that would address that.
Dr. Graysek did include one for our information. But the committee worked with PSBA and got a policy designed for our school. Of course, we would change it as needed. And we did receive a couple from other school districts that have the therapy dog as was proposed to the committee. So, you know, we'll share all that as soon as, you know, I don't want to come in here sounding like a, I don't know what I'm talking about kind of thing.
That's great. I just wasn't sure if we just dropped it without discussing it. So thank you so much.
Sure.
That's all I had under discussion items. Mr. Flee, now I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Any other items from board members that you'd like to review, discuss?
The girls lost.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. So great job to our girls for getting to the semifinals. And third place in the wood field.
Any other items?
Well, so what was the point of bringing up the discussion for therapy dogs? Making any decision on it? It's just a topic that's going to come up in the future?
Possibly, if there's an interest in it.
If it was from the past, then it just falls off, that's all. Any other items from our administration that I'd like to bring up in any way? All right. Audience, any comments that I'd like to talk about? At this time, I'll entertain.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you all for listening today.